Are you logging in all the, everybody else?
Yes, as they show up, I'm logging them in.
You're logging them in, right?
Yeah.
I don't want to start until everybody shows. All right. The meeting is called to order at three thirty-five P M. Uh, Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Uh, Councilmember Montero.
Present.
Councilmember Reyes English.
Yes, here.
Councilmember Valentine.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Patterson.
Here.
And Mayor Vargas.
Yes, here. So the April nineteenth, twenty twenty-two special meeting of the Hawthorne City Council is called to order with all members present. Uh, we will be led in the pledge of allegiance by City Manager Von Norris.
Good afternoon, everyone. If I could have everyone stand, face a flag. Place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, their God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, please read the guy, uh, Ms. Clerk, please read the guidelines for communications.
Pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine five four point three, the public should directly address the legislative body concerning items that have been described in the notice of this special meeting.
Do we have any contacts?
Mr. Mayor, we received no emails regarding public comment, nor have we had any speakers ask for communications.
Okay, we'll wait forty-five seconds for anybody to call in at this moment. Okay, um, I've seen no one, uh, wanting to speak or calling in from the public, so oral communication is closed order. Mr. City Manager, item four, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have item four, uh, council study session, Q and A regarding proposed charter, direction on proposed charter, draft language. Mayor, please, oh, excuse me, I'd like to introduce David Snow, our outside, uh, consultant or firm to, uh, bring back updates regarding proposed charter city.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, as you know, the council has talked about, uh, draft charter here for a couple of meetings. At our last meeting on April twelfth, the council gave direction to, uh, modify the draft charter so that it would retain the current, uh, directly elected mayor system, provide for, uh, some clarity and procedures for nominating and appointing, uh, commissioners, um, and providing for council compensation modeled on the provisions in the City, uh, of Carson Charter, uh, based on a twenty twenty-one income limit. Those modifications have been made, uh, to the draft charter, which has been provided to you all with, uh, a redline version as well. Um, and with that, just looking for any further comments and feedback from the council regarding the draft charter, um, and then, uh, hopefully, uh, direction to proceed in, uh, finalizing and setting the, uh, hearing process in motion, uh, to get this around for, uh, consideration by the voters, uh, in November of this year.
Okay, uh, Mayor Pro Tem?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I reviewed the, the, the changes and updates in our package. I think it actually reflects the vote that happened at the last council meeting and the positions of, uh, the councils as a whole. Um, obviously, I think it's a good idea that City of Hawthorne, um, brings it before the people if they want to, um, be a charter city like, like our contemporaries and cities around us. Uh, I believe that this charter act, you know, allows us to have greater land use control, um, solidifies, solidifies our ability to prosecute our own misdemeanors. Um, you know, have some updates to commissions, have some updates to, uh, compensation, um, and, uh, just gives a lot more municipal, uh, control. Also, it gives the ability to join in the fight for S D nine, so, um, you know, like I said, I think that, uh, what's on agenda accurately reflects the, um, the, uh, suggestions of the votes of the councils. I'd like to move that we finalize this draft, uh, proceed with the, the hearing process, and, you know, let the community weigh in on it, and then ultimately let the community go on. Just like we're gonna move forward.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Von Montero.
No.
Councilmember Reyes English.
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Patterson.
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas.
Yes.
The vote reflects Mayor and Councilmember Reyes English, Councilmember Valentine, Mayor Pro Tem Patterson, voting yes, and Councilmember Montero voting no.
Okay. City Manager Norris, please continue with item number five.
Uh, good afternoon, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council. Uh, staff has prepared an update regarding council priority dot exercise that was conducted during the February twenty-third, twenty twenty-one regular scheduled meeting. Council approved fourteen priorities in order of their priority. Uh, I will at this time give an update on all priorities. I will ask each elective official to complete the priority list survey I have placed on your desk. Um, if you're not here, I can email it to you. Um, after the presentation, um, I would like the council to give me, uh, feedback on their top five priorities in order of importance for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. Um, I will calculate the results and provide an update, uh, for your review. After the completion of the presentation, I will have staff available to answer questions regarding the priorities and their individual updates. At this time, if Eric can share the PowerPoint, please. All right. Uh, City Council Priority Fiscal Year twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two update. Direction received from council on February twenty-third, twenty twenty-one. Next, please. So we have here listed, uh, two pages of priorities. I'm gonna read each one off, and they're listed in the dot exercise by their most important to council at that time. Business-friendly and customer service-oriented City Hall, cannabis, cleanness of the city, COVID-nineteen response and recovery, uh, development standard review and update, economic development program, Hawthorne Mall site. Next. Homelessness, increase home ownership, long-term financial health of the city, parking solutions, professional development of the workforce, public safety, strategic planning. So we have fourteen items there that I'm gonna discuss individually. Business-friendly and customer service-oriented City Hall. These are some of the steps that the city staff in my office has, uh, take, taken pride in to explore and to accomplish. Improve systems and processes and establish services levels to ensure City Hall services are easily accessible and provide, provide an timely matter to residents and businesses. Also develop and implement an internal program to establish the city customer service standards. Uh, below is our vision. Customer service vision for the City of Hawthorne will continue to foster and build a service-focused culture with empowered employees who know what to do and how to do it, and who will go the extra mile to provide positive customer service experience. When citizens engage with the city, they will receive constant, consistent, excuse me, timely and solution-oriented services. All full-time employees will complete, or did complete, a customer service training course, which consisted of thirteen modules, a post-assessment, and given a certificate after completion. The training provided a refresher of basic and allows individuals to discover their own customer service strength as well as areas that they need to improve in. I'm proud to say that we had over a hundred employees take the, the customer service training and all finished it, and as you know, we had a presentation from the web, which, uh, provided accolades to the city for that completion. Next, please. Uh, item two, develop cannabis, develop and implement an ordinance to allow the regulation of cannabis businesses. The Cannabis Working Committee, C Y C, is continuing its work with the city consultants. We're getting numerous inquiries from cannabis companies that are following the progress of our committee. We have completed four town hall meetings and received input from several residents, although only a few participants. The C W C meetings on March twenty-fourth included an analysis of the zoning map for potential locations and licenses. The C Y C is working diligently on an ordinance for council's consideration. Next. Uh, here we have the steps in permitting progress process options. Uh, we have completed the community outreach. We're currently, uh, developing the ordinance, and we're looking to establish oversight committee as soon as possible. The remaining steps will be application process, permit processing, facility construction, and operation. As you see below, we have on left-hand side our consultants, and we have city staff represented on the right-hand side. Next slide. Uh, one of the more important items that was selected as a priority was cleanness of the city. Uh, the City of Hawthorne has implemented the following below items. Bulky item collection dates for residents of Hawthorne. Increase family, multifamily building bulky item pickup, up to five items, four times a year. Hosting citywide events for, uh, e-waste, paper str- paper shredding, household hazardous waste collection. Conducted multiple community cleanup events. Successfully implemented S B thirteen eighty-three. This bill will reduce the amount of organic waste being disposed in our landfills. And also, we have a legal dumping hotline that we've shared with the public on multiple, uh, landing pages on our website. Next. Cleanness of the city. Uh, P D has taken an active role with this. If we start from the left-hand side, we have, um, for areas with repeated dumping concerns, uh, work with Public Works to expand the network, network of surveillance cameras as investigation tool, liaison with code enforcement to issue civil citations to collect damages. On the right-hand side, prior to COVID, the pandemic, we had a Community Improvement Task Force Group. The task force group would meet every two weeks and discuss long-term city issues, complaints, and work together to resolve complex matters, including homelessness, encampments, homelessness, homelessness outreach, illegal dumping, business license, compliance and code enforcement. Uh, we will start these meetings after May tenth, when City Hall opens up. Next slide, please. COVID-nineteen response and recovery. Uh, one of the items here is to develop and implement a multi-year plan to provide support and resources to residents and businesses to help the city emerge vibrant and strong from COVID-nineteen pandemic. We have taken the following steps: secured free COVID-nineteen testing to the public that started January eleventh. Uh, we are in the middle of a business assistance grant. Below that, we have Business Rental Relief Assistance Grant, COVID-nineteen Relief and Economic Recovery Program. That program includes marketing assistant program, including individual businesses, marketing support, and shop local programs of digital cards, excuse me, digital gift card program, storefront reopening, and board-up removal program. Over three thousand surveys were mailed out to businesses. I included a, a copy of the postcard that was mailed out to business, businesses for support. Uh, we also developed and implemented an emergency program, emergency rental assistant rent program, emergency business assistant, and the emergency housing voucher program is going very well. Next slide. Development standards review and updates. Review and potentially update the city development standards for residential and commercial, commercial areas. Staff will establish steps in fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three to improve our standard development process. Uh, the bullets there include improved performance measures to address implementation challenges, establish focus groups, meetings that would assist with identifying the obstacles, and lastly, updating our general plan that hasn't been updated since nineteen eighty-nine. Economic development program. Establish a formal economic development program to attach, retain, and support business, businesses and growth, and grow the economy in Hawthorne. Established, we did establish the Economic Ad-Hoc Committee that meets regularly every month. Elective officials and city manager did attend, uh, conference in Las Vegas that we made massive connections with, uh, vendors across the nation. Implement commercial facade improvement program, potentially one point four, one point four million available through HUD funds. Lastly, obtain the service of Kelly and Associates, Associates Management Group, L C, for economic development and strategic goal setting, which most of the staff has completed a meeting with them, and a few pending elective officials still have to meet, but I think it's a great experience and a great tool to learn where we are as a community. Uh, another party, Hawthorne Mars Mall Site. Pursue solutions to redevelop the former Hawthorne Mall Site. With the help of the City Attorney's Office, aside from the, defending appeals on the administration citations issued from last year, a public nuisance abatement action has started in Torrance Court. The city has also issued a notice of non-renewal of business licenses, which is scheduled for a Minister of Hearing for the last week of March that did already take place. Next. Another priority, homelessness. Reduce the extent of homelessness and their related impacts to the neighborhoods and businesses areas. What we've done, we combined Housing Department with Community Services to enhance, or to to enhance a synergy related to serving Hawthorne most vulnerable population. The city is planning stages of implementation of the Bridge of Hope Community Project Housing. Staff will utilize C D B G, C D B G, and C V and other funding sources for public service and bridge housing. The South Bay C O G awarded the city three hundred and forty-eight thousand from Innovation Grant Funds to be used on an eighteen-month agreement with this Los Angeles Center of Alcohol and Drug Abuse La Cada, which we had individual at our last regular meeting speak about the, the process or progress they've made in our community. Uh, this was a great event at Memorial Center. It was, uh, the postponed, but homeless count that we did, um, have assistance from P D, our homeless service coordinator, Ducey Medina. We actually acquired a homeless, uh, service staff from South Bay Web, no cost to the city, and we've housed several displaced individuals through Project Room Key and other programs. Uh, one of the, the bigger items on here, which I think is very needed in our community, is increase, increase homeownership. Develop a program to increase home ownership within the city. The City of Hawthorne will be launching financial literacy classes starting in September twenty twenty-two, which will be implemented for the public and employees. We plan to partner with Connecta Credit Union for additional financial literacy opportunity for residents and employees. Next, uh, we'll be offering wealth management and insurance services and a comprehensive financial plan and many other services to employees. We're exploring utilizing funds under the HUD program to purchase an apartment building or apartment buildings and convert them into condominiums for sale. Lastly, uh, allocate available funds for potential future low-income housing home ownership programs or projects. Long-term financial health of the city. Continue progress towards improving long-term financial health for the city. Uh, with the help of the, uh, Finance Department, we have, uh, maintained and exceeded the required cash balance while council has authorized an investment of ten million in excess general fund cash to take advantage of the investment earnings. In order to help reduce the, over the one thirty-nine, hundred thirty-nine million in O P E D liabilities, council has authorized city to participate, to participate in the PAR's Post Employment Benefit Trust Program. Once, excuse me, once contributes are placed in the PAR's trust, assets from the trust can be used to reimburse for city O P E D costs, other pay O P E D costs directly while not affecting the general fund cash flow. There is opportunity to earn high returns on investments than the general fund, which was a great restriction on investments. The greater, the greater exit rate of return discount rate will lower O P E D liabilities. Credit rating agencies look more favorable on agencies who adopt and pre-fund trusts. Parking solutions, which is a major problem in our community. Uh, with the guidance and leadership of council, we have implemented a parking T pilot program. The goal of this program is to maximize available on-street parking and deter residents from reserving parking spots for family or friends. Staffs have surveyed different areas in the city, um, on narrow streets with parking limits to, uh, to one side, mixture of land use, apartments, duplexes, single-family resi- residence units, close to commercial establishments. Uh, we have tested the effectiveness of on-street parking markings. Uh, we are in the three months of implementation. Staff will monitor monthly and collaborate with Police Department for Enforcement. After six months, uh, Public Works staff will reevaluate, reevaluate the merit of expanding the program. And as you look at map one, you see one of the areas of test areas that we are actually tapped into. And if we go to the next slide, we can see area two, excuse me, area two that we have this pilot program implemented in. Um, to go deeper into parking solutions, uh, we have explored parking-related revenue to fund parking infrastructure. Hawthorne Police Department, the council approved a five-year, two hundred and fifty-five, two hundred and fifty-five, seven hundred thousand dollar agreement for license plate reader technology to increase the effectiveness for parking enforcement staff to locate and impound, uh, parking sites, the most recent of which is at at least twenty-one days old, can be legally impounded. Vehicles are only released when the outstanding citations are paid. Professional development of the workforce. We're gonna develop policies and allocate funding to ensure employees receive training on a regular basis to improve their skills and professional opportunities. The city will invest resources in all employees. The city will cross-train all employees. Implement reorganization in City Hall to increase professional development of the work, uh, force. Public safety. Work with the Police Department to ensure policing is effective, responsive, and address issues on accordance to the community. P D has implemented these two items. Uh, the department is in agreement with a vendor formerly known as E L U D, currently Zen City, which specializes in the collection and analysis of data related to the provisions of police service, police services. Data is collected via online surveys that are automatically populated on a user social media app based on geolocation. Data is correlated by, uh, geographic areas of the city and provides to the Police Department for their help on monitoring to, um, excuse me, monitoring that issue. The department is evaluating services offered by a vendor, S P I, S P I D R Tech, which is an automated system that will send out real-time updates via text message to persons who have requested police services. Callers to nine eleven, nine one one would be updated on an estimate time before an officer arrives unseen and can be notified when a report has been completed or if an arrest has been made. Also, the department continues to provide active shooter and, uh, tac med training to all our community partners as requested, on a requested basis. Res- recipients have included local school districts personnel as well as community groups H O As. The department has also been coordinated with Caltrans, California Highway Patrol, and other public works with cleaning of homeless encampments on state property. Lastly, the Community Feers Bureau and Special Operations bureaus have deployed community, community substance trailers to various neighborhoods through the city to increase outreach and communication as well as address complaints that have been received via email, phone calls, and through the elective city officials. Lastly, strategic planning, which, you know, is a great ending to this presentation, because we're gonna identify recent economic development activities. Assess local and regional trends, examine current growth opportunities, and introduce a series of goals and objectives that the city may pursue on a go-forward basis to help. That the city may pursue on a go-forward basis to help remain focused on addressing residential, commercial. And retain, excuse me, retail and industrial development. Begin employing a SWAT, which is a strength, weakness, opportunity, threat analysis. To establish a baseline of shared economic values and visions that can be then crafted into adopted goals and objectives for the next. One to five years. This plan would identify the individuals who would be accountable for meetings, goals and timeframe for accomplishments. And a system for measuring results and targeting expectations. And that concludes the fourteen city council party, um, strategic priority update.
Okay, um, so I just wanted to, um. Mister City Manager, there are fourteen items, that's plenty of information we could talk about. Um, but if you could help us focus. How you would like for us to approach this so that we have an efficient discussion or direction or whatever, what were, what was your mission?
My recommendation was to, uh, you know, receive the report. Uh, ask questions regarding the fourteen items that um, I displayed. And then fill out the sheet on your desk with the top five priorities that you would like us or staff to continue to investigate. And improve on um, as priorities for the city.
Okay, that's fine. And I see that you have, you have this thing uh, with most important, all the way to least important of the five. So I do suggest that, once you receive these from us. That you give a uh, weight of five to the most important, a weight of four, three, two, one, because. If all you, if all you wanted to get was just the, the top collection of individual items, then you wouldn't have to have indicated most important, right?
Right, so I, I think after the presentation and the brief update on each item. If you are satisfied with the council with the update I provided on some items and you would like the city to focus additional resources on the remaining items. Please indicate those items on the sheet that's placed on your desk.
Um, yeah, I just recommend that you give a weight of five to the most important and all the way to a weight of one. Uh, just so because we're gonna have. There might be three on this, three on this other one, just kind of to be able to rank them. And make it easier and not have to go back to us and ask us which one of these is more, more important, but okay, um, let me just double check. Councilmember Reyes English and then Councilmember Valentine.
Thank you, Mayor, and uh, thank you Vaughn for your report. I want to see how we could address, uh, not each one individually, but. More importantly with, uh, I would say common sense. And this is my opinion. I believe items one and three. Uh, should be internal operations. I believe that, uh, especially number one, which is business-friendly and customer-service-oriented City Hall, that should be across the board. Every day, something that is an HR policy and, and, and leadership, which is city manager and city council. That should be a given, it shouldn't be whether or not we should choose to make it a priority or not. That should be a priority off the bat from its leadership internally, and that includes the cleanliness of the city, that should be the same. We shouldn't have to be debating whether or not we want a clean city or not, that should be given. Item number seven, I believe we've conflicted out, I say this because we have a pending litigation on them all, we shouldn't even be discussing it, let alone making it a priority. Number nine, increase homeownership, these have been items that have been passed by the city council, uh, I know I passed something similar to this. I know other council members have passed something similar to this, they've been instructed and given direction, so this should be something that should be. Uh, had been implemented some time ago and what the city is doing to help to increase homeownership. This is again, an internal policy that should have been implemented during the council when it initially passed it. With regards to the T pilot pro, uh, program, again, this should be an internal operations from the department that handles that. It was given instructions and given direction during the city council meeting, therefore, it's to them. Uh, providing us what their resolutions are for finding more parking for us, it shouldn't again be a priority that we have to discuss. And whether or not it's a priority for us or not, this is an internal uh, operations that should be um, ongoing. And should be giving, uh, reporting out to the council on how they're doing with regards to finding ample parking for everybody, and that includes businesses. Parking in their business complexes where they should be and not on the streets. Businesses need to be uh, looked over and reviewed more and cited, especially that, uh, businesses that have parking. They should be keeping their, their parking for their vehicles and for their businesses, not using city parking. Um, with regards to. The professional development and workforce, again, this, this shouldn't, uh, I think this should be recommended from an HR city manager perspective. And brought to the city council for consideration, especially when we're talking about professional development of our workforce, which is always important to us. To assure that they have the training that they need, but more importantly are meeting the standards that we want. And I would say that, that should be a given too, again, not having to decide whether or not we want to have professional development for our employees. That's a recommendation, just like we have, um, uh, reimbursements for those that continue, uh, you know, to, to get. To get higher education, so I, I, I want us to really review the fourteen items because I think that we could ultimately bring down the fourteen. To a, a reasonable number that is of the highest importance to the council and to the city with regards to. What direction we want to see the city in the next three to five years should be included in some of these other components that I didn't mention, but. For the ones that I did mention, I really believe they should be internal operations and should be something that should be considered under HR. And its leadership, which includes our city manager, our city attorney's office, um, especially, um, again. Uh, professional development and things like this, because it, 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 it's a predicament that you're putting us in with regards to having to prioritize whether or not. Uh, some of these are concerns and we shouldn't really be, you know, having to decide, to decide that, I think again. Uh, we, we should know automatically that cleanliness of our city is important. Customer service and a business friendly, it should be a given and, and all the rest that I had made mention, so I want to see if we could take some of those. Into consideration and narrow down this fourteen to, to a much smaller number and uh, give those department, um. You know, directives that this should be, this should be, uh, should be ongoing solutions that they're bringing to the council.
Um, so thank you, Councilmember Reyes, um, I'll go next, but this is exactly what we're needing, we're doing right now. Uh, we're making our points, trying to persuade the rest of the, everybody else as to the importance and possibly not important. And, and whatever our opinions are, so this is, you know, your, your, you know, your opinions and comments are welcome. Uh, so ultimately this ranking is not a, usually, everybody still will be able to rank any of these fourteen as they see fit. Uh, but like, as we're saying, we're going through them in general terms, just to kind of give our input on them, so that's good. So, as for myself, I'll go first and then Councilmember Valentine, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Patterson, and if, uh. Councilmember Montero raises his hand or.
I'll go last because I cannot raise rent, uh, because this computer is not mine, so I cannot see.
Oh, okay, okay, I got you.
Go last.
All right, that's fine. So, so yeah, everybody, please give your feedback, kind of just goes as efficiently as possible. So, business-friendly and customer-service-oriented City Hall, all of us, we've received those telephone calls. If, if we don't have a business-friendly, uh, and customer-service-oriented City Hall, then we're gonna field the complaints. It'll be harder for people to do business and uh, I think that, uh, that's something that we should consider and rank accordingly. Um, the cannabis, with regards to cannabis, I think that process is so far along. That to prioritize it, what's pointed is there to prioritize, we have other items that we can prioritize. Instead of that, it's already headed in that direction, um, so, um, I think we could have five others. Um, so, is it important? Absolutely, but uh, we can prioritize the others. Cleanliness of the city, yeah, I mean, that's, that's an ongoing, uh, situation, that's an ongoing concern. And uh, I think it, to prioritize, i- it's always gonna be at the top of our priority list, period. So we should always be conscious, um, but uh, you can still consider it listed if it's something of concerning. COVID-nineteen response and recovery, I think we have a great team that's already doing a great job. Um, and advising us and we as city council members, as we know, in the last meeting, we gave each other feedback. As to how and when we should, uh, open up the city, so I think we're already doing that. Development standards review and update. I'm gonna group that one actually for myself with parking solutions. Um, I don't think we should disregard parking solutions because parking is one of the biggest problems that we've had. Because of bad development standards, because of the bad development standards and the lack of parking with some of our residential. Uh, multi-unit, uh, high-density development, we've had the parking solutions, uh, parking problem. So I don't think each of those goes hand in hand, so I think we should really. I'm struck, I'm stuck between choosing between development standards and parking solutions because maybe the root is. Um, the development standards not being up to par. Economic Development Program, that's, we always want to be in the best financial shape as possible, we, yes, we have a great surplus. But it is true, my council colleagues have said, we need to look forward to make sure that we keep those strides, um, moving ahead. And not go in a backwards direction, and kudos to all our city staff for helping and uh, moving us along in that direction. And for all my council member colleagues that have equally participated in pushing that along. The Hawthorne Mall site, I do agree, we're in a litigation, so we just need to, you know, maybe. We want that to be developed and hopefully, once the litigation is passed, we can uh, move and push for something there. Homelessness is of concern, we can't disregard it. Um, but as I've said pretty personally, um, that it's a regional solution and not the city of Hawthorne shouldn't. Be taking the brunt of it, also, um, I have received some complaints of vans dropping off people in our city. Uh, a couple vans, so I've received those from residents, and so I'm kind of concerned that we might have either other cities or other organization. Um, bringing people here when they could, could be sending, uh, taking them to the appropriate services in their, uh, in. Where, wherever they are, wherever there are those services, long-term financial health of the city. That's always a top concern, that's always a continuous concern, I don't think introducing it as a priority right here. Is ever, ever, ever gonna take it from its top position along with, uh, some of these other things that we have. So parking solutions, professional development of the workforce, every year and every single time we, that's always been a constant, it's always been present. And we always have an opportunity, uh, to, uh, address that when it comes to our. Our conversations with the employees as a formal body that we are as a city council, public safety. Uh, always, we, you know, we wanna make sure that, uh, we provide the best and most innovative. Technology and make sure that we bring in the best, so we always have to, uh, prioritize that as well. Um, strategic plan, I think every three or five years, we're gonna have to deal with it, so I prioritize it, so. Uh, I think, uh, those, that's my feedback, and I've already, I think I selected it five, uh, six, I need to whittle it down to five. So hopefully, everybody here is gonna be able to, um. I think, I think once we all give our comments, if we could just go ahead and move and list our top, uh, our top five, okay? Councilmember Valentine, then Mayor Pro Tim Patterson, and then, uh, Councilmember, uh, Montero.
Um, so I, thank you, Mayor, so I tried to look at this in terms of. Uh, grouping it in terms of the most important, but I tied them all together in terms of the long-term financial health of the city. So in my view, that is the top priority for me, and everything else sort of fell in with that. So Economic Development Program, I think absolutely it's, it's critical that we have an economic development program because that. Ties in to the long-term financial health of the city. Hawthorne Mall Site, I think we have to look at the Hawthorne Mall Site because. In terms of the Hawth, also in terms of the long-term financial health of the city, the Hawthorne Mall Site. Whether we, no matter what happens, it has always been the centerpiece of what was possible in Hawthorne as far as our economic development. So regardless of what the owner wants to do with it, I think we have to have a plan for what we want to see. When this, um, litigation is finally over, where is it going, what are we going to ask for? And, and even, even while the litigation is going on, um, what is it that we want as a council, where do we? How, if, if we resolve this lawsuit today, what would we tell the owner we want him to do with it? I think we have to have a plan for that because absolutely the Hawthorne Mall Site is the financial centerpiece of the city or will be at some point. Um, number four, I had developed a strategic plan that establishes the city's goals and objectives for the next three to five years. I also tied that in with our financial health and development, that strategic plan that we're going to have. In my view, absolutely needs to tie in with, um, a plan that. That prioritizes our economic health. And then the last one for me was the development standards review and update because we want to see what kind of city we're going to be. Where are we going to put, um, I, and absolutely I agree with the mayor that parking needs to be a part of that. Where are we going to, where do we want people to live, where do we want, um, what do we want our city to look like? How are we going to? Uh, how are we going to develop Boulevard? All of those businesses that have closed down on the Boulevard, what's going to happen with those businesses af- after? They've been, are they going to be revitalized or is there going to have to be housing in those, in those areas? In order for, um, for the city to survive economically, it all ties in, in my view, to the long-term financial health of the city. So, um, those are my five priorities and again, they all tie in to my number one, which is the long-term financial health of the city.
Mayor Pro Tim?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. You know, I agree with a lot of what's been said prior, the fact that, um, I think some of these things should be. Uh, ongoingly important and valuable, uh, to the city and not, you know, necessarily shouldn't have to make them a special priority. I think a lot of the things that we made our priority, made priorities in the past have been, um, adequately addressed. And are kind of on track, right, so I agree that many things need to continue as, as ongoing project, right, ongoing things. And so with that in mind, when, you know, saying that a lot of these things need to continue, some of these things have been adequately, adequately addressed. You know, how do we identify the top five out of all the things that are important to the city? Uh, the things that, that stood out for me are, some things aren't necessarily on this list, there are some, some things are kind of new. So I just wanted to share what my, my thoughts were, uh, economic development, I think that's going to be key to Hawthorne's financial future. Uh, being business-friendly, so as we attract businesses to the city, just making sure that we have the right processes so they have a good experience and a. And, and adequately, uh, the timeline on everything happens at an adequate amount of time. Staffing is something I want to add, um, you know, we, we are short-staffed in a lot of areas in our city, I think that's. Hurting us, hurting our ability to kind of to deliver on the things that we want to deliver on, and I, um. I would like to make that a priority that we really get fully staffed, you know, that we get an economic development manager or assistant city manager or whatever, that we get a. Um, planning director, right, and we get people in some of these important positions, that's gonna support the things that we want to have happen. So I'd like to make that a priority, um, and I would like to add developing some type of housing commission, I know we've not really talked about this as a council. I do think, I would like to see the city get involved in, uh, the most appropriate way in dealing with. Um, having some teeth to deal with some bad actors, spoken to landlords and the tenant side, so something I would like. To kind of add to the list of things that are important that the city focuses on.
Okay, um, Councilmember Montero, can you hear us?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Well, uh.
Do you, do you have this in front of you, sir?
Yeah, I don't worry, um, I take notes, uh, so all of you have said, um, good things. Um, I'll start with the, the comment that, uh, Councilwoman English said, you know, business-friendly. Cleanliness, Hawthorne Mall, homeownership, long-term financial health disability, public safety, COVID-nineteen, professional development. Those are all things that is in motion, that should be daily in, in our, in our basically, uh, workbook or. Or work ethic, I think what we need to do to, to make the city of Hawthorne prosper. We need to look into economic development, we need to look into strategic planning because I believe we haven't done one. You know, since I could remember, um, we need to deal with the homeless. Uh, and if we need to bring more prosperity to Hawthorne, we need to continue to go with. Uh, and if we need to bring more prosperity to Hawthorne, we need to continue to go with the cannabis's program so to bring some revenues. Because we have to give us a five hour, our revenues, because we cannot only depend on sales tax. And property tax and T O, and T O T tax, because those things could, could, you know, any minute change. So, I, so I believe, you know, uh, for the, uh, long-term financial health of the city. It depends on economic development, strategic planning. Uh, it depends on bringing more revenues like the cannabis is. It depends as helping the homeless to clean up our streets. And also to give a very quality of life to the people Hawthorne, like the developed standards, I agree with that. And include with developed standards is parking solution. So my five top priorities are, one, cannabis is, two, homeless, three, economic develop, four, strategic planning. Five is develop standard slash parking solution. And that's a half.
Can you, uh, can you tap, can you take his down? Because, uh, he's not gonna be able to handle that.
I already submit that to the city manager through, uh, text message.
So. I, I think you grouped, you grouped the parking with, uh, development standards, kind of like, kind of like I did, right?
Solution, yes.
Yeah, cause it's tight, okay. Okay, guys, uh, can we just go ahead and fill out our own? Fill out your own with your top, most important being. Um, right on top in order, and I'm gonna give mine to the city manager. City manager, can you come outside so I can give it to you?
I'll give mine as well.
Are you collecting your calls? You wasn't heard anyone? You might have to read mine.
Hey, guys, so, uh. So ultimately, what's gonna happen is the city manager has to tabulate the results. Uh, Miss, uh, Councilmember Montero sent his, he kind of, he gave him an order. So, uh, he's gonna just tabulate that, so we just gotta give him a few minutes to do that.
So Mayor, excuse me, you wanted the results today?
Uh, is it possible for you to do it? Or what does the council prefer?
We could wait.
Okay, okay. But you have everybody's as of now, right?
Yes, I do. I have all five elected officials, uh, surveys.
In order.
Yes.
Okay, then I guess that's good. So this was a good conversation, everybody has, uh, were able to wait it and truly, uh. Have a prioritized list based on. Uh, levels of importance for everybody and comparing them, okay? So, let's just double check. So I'm gonna make a motion that we receive the report that, uh, city manager Vaughn Norris and staff have prepared for us.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Patterson?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
Vote reflects mayor and council members all voting yes.
Thank you, folks. If there's nothing further from, uh, city council or staff. The meeting is adjourned at four-twenty-four.